Call this meeting of the Zion City Council to order. Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner McDowell?
Here.
Commissioner Fisher?
Here.
Commissioner McKinney?
Here.
Commissioner Dantin?
Here.
Mayor Hill?
Here. Pastor Adams?
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. Let's pray. Father in heaven, first of all, we just want to say thank you for your hand upon us, that you are with us, that you will not forsake us. Lord, I thank you for this great city. I thank you for what this room, all that it represents. I want to thank you for our leaders. Thank you for our mayor. Thank you for our commissioners. Thank you for our first responders. Thank you for our educators. Thank you for our wonderful citizens, Lord. Father, there are many decisions that are weighing heavy on people's hearts, especially tonight. God, I'm praying for wisdom. I'm asking for your guidance. I pray for peace. I pray for direction. I pray for good conversation, Lord God. I pray for ears to hear and hearts to respond. God, we just welcome your presence here tonight. Thank you for all that you are going to do, Lord. We trust in you and we ask for your wisdom to come on this place tonight. Father, we thank you in Jesus's name. Amen.
Thank you, Pastor. Item number four is agenda changes. Do any of the commissioners?
(inaudible).
Oh, excuse me. Please stand and join me in a pledge of allegiance. (inaudible)
(inaudible) to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number four is agenda changes. Do any of the commissioners have any agenda changes? Hearing none, I would like to add pending litigation to the closed session. So it would be for discussion of collective bargaining personnel and pending litigation. Is there a motion to accept the agenda as changed?
So moved.
A motion and a second. Is there a discussion? Court, please call a roll.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner McKinney?
Aye.
Commissioner Dantin?
Aye.
Mayor Hill?
Aye. Item number five is citizens' comments. First is Mary Lou Hildebrand.
I'll be brief. I just want to thank you, Commissioner Dantin, and you, Mayor Hill, for your service to the city. You've both given years to our city in multiple ways. I believe that you have done your best during your tenure to make things better for the citizens of Zion. I just want you to know that your efforts are appreciated. Thank you and good luck in the future.
Thank you. Next is Jackie Granna. And please state your name and place of residence.
Okay, first of all, thank you for allowing me to address the concerns that the impact realized because of the landfill. My name is Jackie Granna, and my husband and I live at 710 Meadow Lane, behind the yellow church on Kenosha Road. My husband and I purchased our home in October of 1998 primarily because of the location. Bergman Nursery was there in place of the landfill at that time, and we instantly began to enjoy our new home, our property, and the safe area where we walked, rode our bikes, and the park across the street is now a favorite place for our grandchildren to enjoy. When we purchased our home, we planned it to be our forever home to enjoy during our retirement years. My husband retired in 2005 and I retired in 2012. I don't want to duplicate what our neighbors have already expressed regarding the odors, the dust, the noise, et cetera, even though we too experience all they have described. I want to focus on another area. While it saddens me to even talk about it, we are seriously considering moving just to get away from the landfill. We began by checking what our home is worth and then checking the cost of homes similar to ours. First, we instantly discovered it is going to be hard to match the location, the amount of property we currently have, with the amount of money we can get out of our home. And I did talk to a realtor today, and just the homes down our street, what they have sold for compared to other areas in Winthrop Harbor is, you know, ours is considerably less. Second, we are finding that it will cost us at least another $100,000 to get even in the ballpark. And to take out a mortgage for that amount will mean we will have a monthly payment of approximately $1,000 for the next 20 years, God willing, we're still here, or basically the rest of our lives. This would be a huge financial burden each and every month to face at this age. I can't help but wonder why this expansion was ever approved when it was so close to an established neighborhood. Why isn't anyone holding the landfill accountable to all the problems it is causing us? If another expansion is approved, it will be an even greater hardship on our neighbors and will eventually include people living north of us. Please take all of this into consideration. You wouldn't like this to happen to you or to your families. And just an FYI, my last complaint to the landfill, Health Department, and other government officials was yesterday. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Joe Mabit, and I would just like everybody to know that you don't have to give your address, just your place of residence, their town.
Okay, thank you, Mayor Hill. You guys probably remember I spoke at the March 19th meeting. I'm sorry, I live in Winthrop Harbor on Meadow Lane. My thought from the last couple of meetings is they went well, besides Mayor Hill laying down the gavel a few times, but I appreciate you guys hearing our concerns, and I think you're listening, so I think it's important enough for me to speak again because this matter is that important to me. So I wanted to add a few more comments. I understand Zion needs revenue, and I fully understand we need a place to put our garbage. I see the hundreds and hundreds of trucks coming and going every day, and unfortunately, I can see and hear the equipment it takes to operate the landfill, but also, the plus side of that, it tells me there's a lot of people gainfully employed with what I'm assuming are mostly good-paying jobs. What I can't understand is how the landfill operates so recklessly with no regards for the surrounding neighbors. I don't enjoy standing up here. I don't enjoy complaining to the landfill on a regular basis. I'd rather mind my own business and go about my daily life. Unfortunately, my daily life is affected daily by the landfill. I remember when they started the last expansion, I was a little bit ignorant to what was going on. I remember the construction phase, all the noise and dust. I had just put up a pool and a deck and nice outdoor cooking and seating area a couple years prior to the last expansion, and it's just progressively gotten worse, and then they started dumping the garbage in the active cells, and it's just gotten worse from there. I mean, we used to host pool parties and all the family functions and the church youth group, they'd all have parties at our house, and a lot of that doesn't happen anymore, mostly because of the embarrassment that I go through and the smell and the conditions that are on my property from the landfill. Like I said, I've complained hundreds of times. I've had the Lake County Health Department come to my house on several occasions, acknowledge what I was dealing with, and I had one of the gentlemen who worked for the Health Department, he told me, "I need to learn how to coexist with the landfill." I was like, "Really?" I said, "Coexist?" I said, "I do my part. I pay my outrageous property taxes. I take care of my property. I'm not causing my surrounding neighbors any problems." I said, "What's the landfill doing to coexist? You know what they're doing? They do whatever they want." I'm guessing it's been about 10 years since the last expansion, and nothing's been done about the problems, and it keeps getting worse. And now they want to make these problems 110 acres bigger for 30-plus more years. So to put this in perspective, let's say the city had a problem with the road or sewer or anything that drew public complaints on a daily basis. You think it'd be acceptable to do nothing about it, and your solution is you want to make the problem much bigger? There's no way the city wouldn't rectify a situation in a timely manner and make sure it doesn't happen again. I'd do everything in their power to make sure it doesn't happen again. And I understand that, you know, I read the comments, and people are saying, "Well, if it's that bad, why don't you just move?" Commissioner McDowell, last meeting when I was speaking, you asked me if I was ever approached by the landfill to sell my house. I haven't, and when I bought my house, I never planned on moving. I put a lot of money in my house that I'll never be able to recover. I listened to Commissioner Dantin. When you talked about how you found the perfect house, or you thought was your perfect house in Countrywood Hills, and I was thinking about myself when you were speaking about when I saw my house, I felt that same way. It didn't have a garage. One of my best friends was a garage builder. I was able to put up a big garage how I wanted. The south side of my house had a big covered porch, and I visioned my pool and my deck, and, you know, I feel fortunate to have, and I still feel fortunate to have what I do. Problem is, I mean, my wife and I have talked, and we've decided that we've had enough of the horror conditions and what we have to deal with, and we said, you know, "We want out of here." I think it's wrong we're being driven out of our home, because I kind of feel that way. Also, the problem is, like Jackie said, my property taxes are so high, and the landfill has driven the values down in the neighborhood. I, you know, I'm sitting here thinking about retirements down the road, and now I got to start over. It's just, you know, the numbers don't add up. It's just, it's hard to deal with. And then when the landfill comes through like they have, and they've bought several houses in my neighborhood, and they turn around and rent them out, what does that tell me when I see this going on? They know there's a problem. They rent to them people, some disclosure agreement, you know, they don't say nothing. They're happy. They're renting a nice house for a reasonable price, and it just, it just keeps going on. So I appreciate you guys hearing me out. I hope you're taking what I'm telling you as a serious problem and a problem that the landfill wants to make much bigger with the expansion. So thank you for listening, and if you have any questions that I can answer for you?
Thank you.
Thanks.
Kurt Andrews?
My name is Kurt Andrews. I live on Kenosha Road, Zion mailing address, but I'm a Winthrop Harbor resident. First off, thank you, Mayor Hill, Mayor-elect McKinney, other council members, for allowing us to have the opportunity to be heard. I recently added you to my landfill complaint list. Have you, are you guys receiving them?
Yes.
On that list are various representatives from the Illinois EPA, Mike Kuhn from the Lake County Health Department, Jim Lewis from Advanced Disposal, the general manager, John Rizvold, attorney with the Collins Law Firm, and you folks. I think it's really peculiar that since I've added you guys to that list, twice in the last week, I've had Jim Lewis and some labors start coming to my house and picking up not just the big bags. Now they're going after the real small stuff. So we all kind of know what's going on here. It's really odd that this is happening now when they're trying to get the annexation. I think we all know what's going on. We've expressed in the past that we didn't like strangers on our property, we wanted to be notified. They've always offered to come clean up. They have always only picked up the big bags and left all the little materials for us to clean up. I'd like to read just a few lines from this agreement, the property value protection agreement we've heard so much about. By the property value protection agreement executed contemporaneously with the host city agreement and supported by the consideration state here in Browning Ferris Industries of Illinois, BFI, agrees to provide sale price protection to the owners of residential property in the vicinity of BFI operations. Such protection is provided as evidence of BFI's good faith and good citizenship in seeking expansion of its current solid waste management and not because of any BFI belief that such operations will actually negatively impact surrounding community property values. The very next sentence in the preamble, "BFI recognizes that by the nature of the operation of a landfill that the residential real property immediately surrounding the landfill may be impacted in value due to the operation of the landfill." There you go. Says it all to me. Reasonable market price means the actual market value of a property as-is, whereas, predicated upon the final sales prices of comparable properties in the vicinity of the property and initially fixed at the higher of the market prices assigned by the owner in the application or by BFI's appraiser at the time the BFI protected price is determined. A property offered for sale at the reasonable market price, which has not been the subject of a good faith purchase offer within 90 days, may have its offering price reduced by up to 10% every 120 days thereafter until a bona fide sale is completed. Such a reduced price shall be considered the reasonable market price under this agreement." Now picture yourself trying to go purchase another home if you did want to move away from the landfill, when you know you're not going to get any offers, and every 120 days you drop it by 10%. Now how could I ever go and put money down on another home and sit and wait for this whole thing to trigger until somebody finally purchases my home? I sure hope in the new property value protection agreement that you guys really get some verbiage in there to protect all of these folks behind me here. Sale means the first compensated sale of a property pursuant to a real estate sale contract entered into after the effective date. Sale does not include transfers of a property by gift, bequest, inheritance, to terminate a joint tenancy, or pursuant to a decree of dissolution of marriage. Let's think about this. My wife and I are in an airplane accident. We both died. I've left the house to my sons. They're going to take $100,000 loss. This doesn't cover the next owner of the home. I don't understand why my family has to keep suffering because the landfill has encroached upon me. My property line's never moved. Theirs has. They keep coming closer and closer to me. I'd like to remind you that yesterday, Advanced Disposal was purchased for 2.9 billion, billion, by Waste Management. Thank you.
Carrie Johnson?
Good evening, and thank you again. Oops, sorry about that. Thank you again for allowing me to address this group. My name is Carrie Johnson. I live in Prairie Ridge Estates, which is the subdivision that was built starting in 2005 directly, I guess, east of the landfill and just east of a lot of my neighbors here. Tonight, I just wanted to leave you with a couple of facts. From 2015 to 2000, mid-2017, I kept a handwritten log every day that there was some disturbance in our life from the landfill. In mid-2017, that became too onerous, so I transitioned to emailing. Every time we either had noise, odor, turkey vultures, birds, trash, what have you, I would email the Health Department and Advanced Disposal, Jim Lewis. The response I would get from Jim Lewis at that time was, "Got it." For months, that was, that's all I got. "Got it." The Health Department came to visit me one day in my driveway and suggested, since I'm the president of our HOA, that I ask the city, our village of Winthrop Harbor, to move the entrance to our subdivision to Lewis so that people wouldn't see the dump when they came to our house. I said, "Really? That's your solution?" And that's all he had. So I also, last summer, early spring, began adding the Illinois EPA to my email list. Not once have they ever even acknowledged that I have sent them an email. Not once. So for 2017, I sent 61 emails in six months, and these emails sometimes cover one or two days. I don't always catch it on the day of. I might write it down and then do it the next day. In 2018, I sent 84 emails. So far in 2019, I've sent 20. Last year, my birthday, it stank. Valentine's Day, it stank. Christmas Eve and Christmas Day 2018, it reeked so awful, we didn't even want to eat our Christmas dinner. Thanksgiving, two years in a row, the weekend of Thanksgiving, it reeked. Halloween, it reeked. My son's birthday, it reeked. All of these are occasions where you would want to sit in your yard or have folks over to have dinner, and all of those days were spoiled. And I just, I have all of these email records, and I could sit here and read to you about turkey vultures, or trash, or stink. It's always something. It's never one thing. This morning, the migration of seagulls over my house to the dump happens like clockwork. So again, I just want to build on everything my neighbors and friends have said. It doesn't get any better. Oh, it, something did get better. Jim Lewis now, instead of saying, "Got it," says, "I've logged and received your complaint." Thank you.
Thank you. Diane Florio?
Hello. I live on Prairie Avenue, just east of the dump, of the landfill. I'm going to read from the sighting hearing from May of 2010, when I had the first sighting hearing, part of the transcript, things that were told to the neighborhood when it was going. It started off the question, they were talking about the regulatory inspections and the issue of a notice of violation. Says the most noticeable notice of violation that they received was in 2006. There was a violation that they received for odors. Specifically, those odors originated from our gas, the gas from the facility. They received the violation notice late in 2006 and put into motion solutions through the permitting required to install solutions to that problem. All in all, we spent about $2 million in facility upgrades to address the problem, and I believe the problem is largely improved over where we were in 2007. We are planning, we are still planning to stay ahead of the curve. We budgeted for another $1 million of upgrades this year, and they will be commencing in the next couple of months. So hopefully, we will continue to stay above, ahead of that curve and minimize the problem. And I'm skipping a lot of things. And the question was to Mr. Lewis, "You talked a bit about the odor violations, and you said they related to the odor arising from the landfill. What part of the operation of the landfill results in odor emissions that might cause these violations?" Mr. Lewis's response is, "Well, in this particular case, it was obvious landfill gas generation. As the waste decomposes, it generates gas. The primary component of the methane of that is methane gas, but there are other smaller fractions in the gas that do contain odor." So the question was, "What operation is the landfill doing to make that odor?" The gas collection control system consists of gas wells. And the question, "So when there's an area around the landfill, when the neighbor sense a significant amount of odors, is it unusually characteristic of there being a problem with the gas collection control system?" Mr. Lewis responded, "I would say that has been my experience and the apparent experience of the neighbors." So the question, "So it is important in order to maintain comprehensive control of the odors to design and operate the gas collection system in a proper way?" Answer, yes. Question, "You mentioned one means by what you try and control odors on the active face when you experience during your inspections particularly pungent load. Another means that I am familiar with to control odor on the active face are misting systems. Are you familiar with those?" Answer, yes. Question, "Does the landfill have a misting system?" Response, "Yes, we do. It was just along the lines of trying to do everything we could to minimize the impact on the area. These systems have had some success, and we wanted to employ it to give it a shot." But question, "Do you principally use it on the active face or close to the perimeter?" Response is, "We use it around the perimeter, inside of our perimeter access road, but not, question, but not necessarily on the active face." Mr. Lewis said, "That's correct." Next question, I guess this gets back to the odor situation, because the land, we really could expect the odor to actually get worse in the upcoming years with the expansion and incorporation of more wells and more gases and more everything else, the odor probably will get worse. Mr. Lewis responded, "I believe that as long as we continue to stay in front of that gas production curve, which has been our course now since the end of 1997 to 2007, I don't foresee that being a problem." Now, could something come up where there is an issue? Sure, but I think one of the things we have done, Viola has done, is demonstrate that they are committed to fixing the problems when they come up. And they gave me the freedom, the financial freedom, to do that, an open check to fix the problem. So I think that is probably the best effort I can give you, is that we will continue to do that. The 2006 period, we had an overall gas problem. Unfortunately, that was one of the frustrating things. It took a lot of infrastructure. And question, "The winds change. We get winds that blows the smell out to the west, but we don't have a strong resident population out to the west, immediate, within the proximity as we do to the east. Most of the winds, the prevailing from west to east, they blow our way to the neighborhood, to the east." Mr., yeah, response was yes. That's before the expansion. So now we're going to experience it, I think, a little worse because we're going to be a little closer. Mr. Lewis says, "Yes, you will be closer to the garbage." And he interjected, "And the gases too." That is something, if you have the infrastructure in place, that the problem can be mitigated. The garbage odor, again, that is one of the reasons we installed the misting system, to see if the system is helping or not. If it is not helping, is there a better system out there? And then questioned by one of the hearing officers, going back to an unnumbered criterion from the hearing, "If they've had any other administrative notices or violations or citations other than the one in 2006 through the present date?" Mr. Lewis said, "Yes, I think they're all detailed in the application. I couldn't list them." Question, "Could you summarize, are they primarily odor or litter?" And he's responded, "No, the other odor violation that occurred, actually, they considered to be more of a spot occurrence. That was during the construction of the gas and leshet trench. The odor was caused by the construction. Other than that, the majority of the notice they have gotten are more typically for insufficient daily cover or blowing litter." And one of the other commissioners just wanted to clarify. He had an opportunity to call one night last fall when there was an odor problem. It was overpowering. It was in the Walmart parking lot. His first thought was that Crane Metals Pond had gone septic. It was that bad. He left a message on a Sunday night, and two day, day or two later, he got a call back and said it was attributed to alternative cover problem. Is it more prevalent that it's, that is a cover problem than something else? It was definitely garbage. It was not gas. Mr. Lewis said, "Well, if there is a garbage odor, then yes. I would say that would be a cover problem. The odor is coming during the night off the landfill, and that is a cover problem. And it's day and night, like the other neighbors say."
Okay, I need to get the point on this.
Yes.
We're well past three minutes.
Oh, okay. I'm done.
Thank you.
That was it. Thank you.
Patty Gembarski?
You could read my writing.
I'm from northwest Indiana.
Okay. Good evening. My name is Patty Gembarski, and I currently reside in Winthrop Harbor. I'm nestled just east of the landfill and west of Lewis Avenue. I've been a resident of Lake County, Illinois, for over 40 years, and I've lived in Winthrop Harbor since 2006. I sent out an email this afternoon, and I copied the mayor and the four commissioners. I'm not sure if you've got my odor log. That was me. I also brought a copy, and I'd be happy to leave it with you. This is an odor and noise log. It's over eight pages, single-spaced. This is from July of last year to today, just over nine months. I've been contacting the Lake County Health Department 10 times this timeframe. I've been contacting the Lake County Health Department 10 times this timeframe. Do the math. Prior to this odor log, there was a year and a half timeframe that I made over 150 complaint calls to the Lake County Health Department. Was I happy with the results? Absolutely not. This was after the fact. In my opinion, nothing's been done. It's gotten worse. I actually stopped calling the Lake County Health Department in December, and I will refer to the notes that I have here, on December 11th, I had continuously been calling. The noise from the landfill was waking me up just past 6:00 AM, before my alarm has to go off. I'm not a morning person, I don't have to get up that early. On this day, Mike Hune called me back regarding the complaint I phoned in. His response to my noise complaint, which had been consistently waking me up, as I had indicated, just past 6:00 AM, was, "Don't you have white noise or a fan you can run?" He then proceeded to say, "As the landfill," and this is in quotes, "as the landfill gets higher, there's nothing that can be done." This is December of last year. I basically told him there was no need for me to call. All he was doing was acknowledging my call, and he was providing no substance. These are the complaints. You have a very important vote to cast this evening. You have to ask yourself, what do you want your legacy to be? It could potentially have a negative impact on the surrounding communities, people like me, and the people that are behind me. Put yourself in my shoes. If the roles were reversed, and I was sitting where you are, and you were here fighting for you and your family, how would you want me to vote? I don't know any of you personally. I wouldn't wish this on you or any of your family members, and I'm asking for the same courtesy in return. I'm against the annexation, and I'm asking you to vote no this evening. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor and Commissioners, thank you. I sent your lawyer a letter last week. He told me, he promised me he'd give it to all of you, I trust he did. If you have any questions for me, I've got something else to say, but most importantly, if you have any questions about the letter which I sent to your lawyer a week ago, as I said I would, and which he promised he'd give to each of you, I want to make sure I have a chance to answer them. All right. Well, if you do, I'm happy to answer them anytime you want. It doesn't have to be right now. So, listen, let me say this. I'm the lawyer for the people here in the red shirts, Shawn Collins from Naperville. What happened, the stories that you've heard tonight and in the last couple of weeks of public hearing, those things happened for one of two reasons that relate to 2010. Either, the best thing that can be said about the city of Zion in 2010 is that the city got hoodwinked by the landfill's promises that if you allowed it to expand, it wasn't going to stink up their neighborhoods. That was a false promise. That's the best that can be said. The other end of the spectrum is, is that the city needed the money so bad, the $2 million plus, that the landfill was dangling, that that's the bargain you made. Okay? Now, tonight, you're being asked to make a very cruel bargain. And I know these people well, and they feel for you for the situation you're in. You're the stewards for the citizens of this community, and it has needs, like a lot of communities do. It is difficult to govern, and you don't have enough money. And the landfill comes along and says, "Here's $2 million bucks plus every year. Wouldn't you like that?" The bargain is this. All you've got to do is consign these people to 30 more years of what you consigned them to in 2010. That's all you've got to do. And they don't vote for you. None of you will ever lose office if you do it to them again, because they don't vote here. Almost none of them do. They don't pay taxes here. The easiest thing in the world to do, out of expediency, is take the money and to hell with these people. I think you're better than that. I see the thoughtfulness in your eyes over these last three meetings. I think you're better than that. I think you're better than that. Of all the people in government that's interacted with these people, you've given them more time than any, than anyone else has. You've heard about how the rest of government is treating them. How about you? How about you? Are we going to do it to them again? Or are you going to say, "No, we're going to find a way for the city of Zion to get its $2 million a year and to treat these people decently, and not set them up for 30 more years of this?" It's up to you. It's up to you. It's up to you. Thank you.
Clyde Mclemore? I'm sorry, I can't hear you. Okay.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. My name is Linda Beasley, and I'm a Zion resident. I am here to explain to you the inappropriate, professional behavior my mother and I experienced this past Sunday from Zion Fire Rescue. Okay? So my mother was not feeling good Sunday, and she expressed needing assistance, needing help. She asked us to call 911, and which we did. So we mobilized as a family to get her in a situation so that it was convenient for the paramedics to come in and triage and treat her. As you know, Sunday was a snowstorm, or a lot of snow that we really shouldn't be having in May, I mean, April, excuse me. But at any rate, I was clearing, outside clearing the path when the paramedics arrived. And the gentleman, the driver, who I believe was a lieutenant, unfortunately, I don't know his name, actually got out of the vehicle and said, "Oh, so what, she has a cold? Couldn't the family have waited till after the snowstorm to call for fire rescue?" I was a little put off by that. I took a step back and was like, "Okay." Because I was clearing a path for the fire rescue to get into the house. And when they, when the gentleman walked in, he snapped his fingers, clapped his hands, and said, "Are you ready to go?" Now, my mother is walking with the aid of a walker, so it's not like she could jump up and just vastly jump on the stretcher and be wheeled out. She was not triaged at this time. She was not given any type of assistance at this particular time. So I'm standing there, and I'm looking at the gentleman, like, "Okay." I'm a little puzzled by your behavior, but I didn't say anything, nor did my family say anything at the time, because if you don't know, my father was the captain of the Zion Fire Department. So I do believe that no one in his realm at that particular time would have treated a patient the way this gentleman was beginning to treat me and my family. At that particular time, I asked him, "If this was a heart attack patient, would you be scolding my mother and my family at this time?" And he said, "Well," he looked at my mother and said, "Well, clearly, I can see she's not in distress." With no vitals, nothing taken, just basically on the outward appearance. At that particular time, I became even more agitated and angered, especially when the gentleman got eye level with my mother, who was sitting in the chair, and expressed to her how it was an inappropriate time to call fire rescue through a snowstorm. Because he was irritated, because evidently the ambulance slipped or skidded two times in the efforts to get to my home. So at that time, I addressed the paramedic and told him that he was inappropriate and unprofessional in his behavior. At that particular time, he put his hands on his hip, and he said, "Well, it is true, we are going through a snowstorm, and it is inappropriate to call fire rescue at this time." And I informed him that it didn't matter if it was a snowstorm, a typhoon, a blizzard, that if a citizen of this town calls for assistance, that it's his duty to help them." And he said, "Okay." And that was that. At that time, I asked him who the chief was at the time. I expressed, expressed to him who I was. He clearly didn't care, because I really thought that, you know, we had, grew up, or at least I grew up with Zion Fire Rescue, a lot of the councilmen and the firefighters and things like that, going to the fire stations, visiting my dad and whatnot. It was really appalling to me as to how we were being treated. And more importantly, how he could treat just not a fire family, but any family at that ma, at that time. So they, we, they ended up asking us who was going to the hospital, who was going to be transported with my mother, and they took her out, put her in the ambulance. To make a long story short, they left without any family member. They didn't come back and ask us, or let us know that she has completed, they had completed their triage or whatever it is that they were going to do, and they just left us. And unfortunately, my mother is elderly, she needed someone to be there to answer whatever questions that need, that had to be asked. She wasn't able to answer them, but they just left. And I just, I just can't believe that Zion Fire Rescue has diminished to this point, to where they would treat any citizen of Zion in the manner in which my family was treated. I did get, reach out to a couple commissioners, a couple family friends, because I just don't think that that is a behavior that should be unleashed on the city, citizens of Zion. Come to find out, I'm hearing even more, that this gentleman has been reprimanded previously for this, and he's still in Zion's employ. And I don't understand that as well. It's just really inappropriate. I think my family and I experienced something that was absolutely horrible. And while he was stating that to my mother, that she was not in distress, she was admitted and still in the hospital to this day. And I just think that it's inappropriate. I don't believe that all of the commissioners, or even the mayor, was aware of the situation, but I felt compelled to come here and express my thoughts, and with regard to how we were treated. Okay?
Thank you, Linda. I was aware of this. I think you must have contacted Clyde Mclemore about this issue.
I called any and everybody I could.
Clyde got ahold of me, and I attempted to get ahold of Chief Lewis. He was occupied at the time, and then I called the acting battalion chief at the fire station, explained what I knew of the situation, and he assured me that he was going to give you a call and apologize for that behavior. Did that happen?
Yes, he did. While at, in, at the emergency room in the lobby, I did speak to, the, what, who was it, the commander?
Acting battalion chief.
The shift commander.
Yeah.
Excuse me, I did speak to him, and he did apologize on the behalf and expressed his regret to how we were treated.
Yeah. I'm very sorry also.
Before I add, I apologize on behalf of the department, too. I worked with your father, and he was my first shift commander, he was my first captain. And that's an isolated incident. It should never happen, it should have never happened, and I guarantee you, it will never happen again. And he is being dealt with accordingly.
And sir, I appreciate that, and that's really pretty much all that I'm asking for, is that it does not happen to any other family.
It will not.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Beasley? I want to apologize also on behalf of the entire city, and I do want to reiterate that the individual involved is within the city's disciplinary process right now. In regards to your comment, that you have heard that this may have happened, you know, prior to this also, and that you can't believe that he would still be working for the city, I just want to explain that we deal with unions, we have a union disciplinary procedure, and we're following the steps in that procedure.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
Mr. Mclemore, do you wish to speak? Bill Tesson?
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor, City Council, I'm back here again, and this is the last thing I would ever thought I would have to do when I purchased my home on Kenosha Road in 1991, unincorporated Benton Township. I'm back again tonight to express my concerns about the annexation of the Wyler Nursery. There are a lot of us here tonight that were not aware of the last annexation of the Bergman Nursery, annexation, and the impact it has had on our lives and our property values. We were hoodwinked. I used that terminology two weeks ago. Mr. Collins, thank you for that. Because a lot of this stuff is done cloak and dagger. I don't know what you know about it, or what the administration passed knew about it, but a lot of this stuff has been done in a cloak and dagger type atmosphere. And this is the way the landfill operates. Last meeting, you had asked if the landfill had any interest in purchasing or made an offer to purchase anybody's property on the east side of Kenosha Road. I believe that individual said no. Well, this brings me to the meeting that I had with Mr. Lewis, Kurt and Julie Andrews, at their home approximately four years ago, expressing our concerns about all the litter, all of the debris. The evidence was in the trees and everything else. Mr. Lewis came out, spoke with us, spoke with us for about an hour, and said, "This was some of the effects." Well, then, I asked Mr. Lewis, "I'm tired of dealing with, would you be interested in purchasing my property?" Mr. Lewis says, "We are not purchasing any properties on the east side of Kenosha Road, or have any interest of purchasing any properties on the east side of Kenosha Road." Well, then Kurt and I, all right, excuse me, I'm getting ahead of myself here. Kurt and I asked Jim about one particular residence that we knew that was sold. Jim finally admitted that the landfill purchased that property, but that was the only one that they had purchased, and it was under some previous agreement of some sort. All right, well, we asked him about two other additional properties on the east side of Kenosha Road. He finally was forthcoming with the truth, that they had purchased those, two additional homes, but no more homes would be purchased, or have been purchased. I guess that would be a better term, "have been purchased." We then asked him to make it even more interesting, about two more additional homes. And Jim finally admitted that those homes had not been purchased, but they are under contract with the landfill. So he was not misleading us that they hadn't purchased them, but they had them under contract. So all these homes were purchased with sellers signing confidentially papers to not disclose anything about the landfill purchasing their properties to the public or anybody else. So with that said, so with that said, the landfill will tell you one thing, and they do another. This is something we've been incurring for many years. They have been lying to all of us for the past 10 to 12 years. And I hate to use this type of harsh verbiage, but there's no other simple way of saying, they're telling you one thing and doing another. So, Mr. Mayor, this is the same company that is asking for an annexation that will lead them to operate for the next 30 to 40 years, under the same operation and the conditions that they're treating us, and that's how they've been operating. The city of Zion made a decision in 2008 and 2010 to allow the annexation to go forward. Those council members that voted to pass that expansion and sighting process were either not educated or not aware of the landfill's impact on our lives and our property value. The landfill has never been a problem before the city granted the last expansion. I've been there since 1991. Never a problem. Mr. Deteen, when did you purchase your home?
'98.
And did you have any issues in '98?
We're not, we're not going, we're not going to get it back.
Okay. All right. Sorry about that. All righty. So I hope and pray that you all have learned a valuable lesson from the past and not make the same mistakes that have plagued us citizens for years about the landfill. You have the power, the ability to make sure that this will not happen again. Mr. Mayor, council members, future mayor, you have the moral, ethical, civil duties to protect any and all individuals that will be impacted by your decisions. You are up here tonight in your position to make decisions to protect, serve your community, and all that are affected by your choices and your actions tonight. Thank you for your time. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Bob Walden? You're not the Bobby Walden I was expecting.
It's not Bobby, not the excavator. Good evening, everybody. My name is Bob Walden, I live in North Prairie Estates in the harbor. You know, we're talking about moving annexation, moving property lines and doing all this, or zoning lines. We're all the same community. You know, it's one community. I had, I, we moved here in seventy-seven, I bought my lot from Jim Taylor. I have long ties with Walt Keegan. My, my mother's cousin was Delmar Newton, the first fire chief in the harbor. We looked forward to moving into an area that was rural. We moved in our house at the end of seventy-eight. I planted a bunch of apple trees, pear trees, peach trees, that I still have. I really can't go anywhere, and, you know, I'm seventy-one years old, and replicate that, you know? Five kids raised, all, all went to Zion Benton High School. It was a great high school, still is. They all had a wonderful experience. You know, um, the only bad experience was Christine tore two ACLs from the catching girls trying to guard them, but, um, it, it's been a wonderful experience living here, but the, and we were told in eighty-five, well, Jim Taylor told us, that in eighty-five they closed the dump. That didn't happen. Mrs. Suedo put an effort to, to stop the annexation, that didn't happen. I didn't, we didn't know about the two-ten expansion, you know, we were not notified. It's a travesty. You know, and, you know, we do business in Zion, the hardware store, we bought a number of bicycles from the cyclory, just within the last month. My daughter comes all the way from Elkhorn to buy a bike there. Yeah, there's no divisions. The harbor, Zion, out west, we're all one community, and I would hope that you would recognize that and act accordingly, 'cause we're brothers and sisters with you. That's all I got.
Sonia Koopreiter?
I'm not gonna speak if, uh, I mean, I'm.
Janet Jones?
I am not speaking about the landfill, although I support you tremendously. I came this evening because of support of the fire and, fire department, and the possibility of layoffs that will be occurring. I understand it's a very difficult decision for the city to make, I understand the budgetary constraints, I'm fully aware of that, but I really feel this is a very important decision regarding life and death, because I think there's a lot of ways we can solve some of these problems. I've spoke extensively to Commissioner McDowell, I've spoke somewhat to Commissioner McKinney. I think there's money to be had, I think there's ways that we can find it. I'm, I'm not saying I have all the answers by any means, but by the same token, I've worked very diligently in the city for a lot of years, and I think our community is wonderful, but when we start slashing fire and police and all that, we're only hurting ourselves tremendously, and I do think we can look other places for the cuts. I would strongly encourage you not to diminish those departments. I don't know why consolidation is not being considered. Again, like I said, I have no answers, I, I mean, I have some answers, but I don't know how feasible they are, but I see consolidation as a real strong point to be considered. I felt that way about the school district, I'm beginning to feel that way about local government, and it's nothing personal against anyone serving, I applaud you for your service, but you, like everyone else, and I have owned many businesses, must live within your means, and you don't. Now, whether, where those problems come from, I'm not casting aspersions, but you simply don't live within your means, and that has to change, and we have to make this community better. As these people spoke, I'm going nowhere either. My family's here, my children are here, my grandchildren, I love Zion, I've been a part of it for a very long time, and we now need something done to be able to handle some of these problems. Quit blaming previous administrations. In the real world, when you take a job, you're responsible for the job. Yes, rest on the laurels for a couple of months saying the previous people. That only lasts a very short time in the real world, in private industry. You're hired to do a job, and that's the job you have to do. So I would encourage each of you to look deep within you, find ways that you can find the money, think about consolidations. Commissioner McDowell does not want to hear it one more time about my consideration for consolidation and/or elimination of the township, which would save you a million dollars right off the boat. So, you know, you're a million six under, I think there's ways to find it. Thank you very much.
We're gonna move on in the agenda. Item number six is the consent agenda, would the clerk please read the consent agenda? Uh, wait, whoa, 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 let, let me back up, I mean, I wanted to, I want to recap here, I'm sorry for jumping ahead. At the last meeting, I had asked, there were three distinct groups, questions for the council. The first was, or one of them, I don't know if it was the first, was from, and, and at the end of the meeting, I asked, and said that I would appreciate that if the groups could get together with representatives from Advance to see if you could come to some mutual agreement on how to move forward. Benton Township was represented by, um...
Larry Booth.
Larry Booth. Sorry, Larry. And they have a, a meeting scheduled with Advance for Thursday of this week. Ms. Koopreiter and Mr. Schneider were here, talking about if there's anything that the city could do to help them with the sale of their property, which is on Kenosha Road, west of Kenosha Road, and east of the landfill property line. Mr. Schneider, in particular, expressed his concern for statements in the offer that he had from Advance disposal that indicated that they could pull this agreement at any time and just not purchase his property, even if, if the landfill went in, that they could just say they're not going to purchase the property. Ms. Koopreiter's primary concern is, if I understand it correctly, is the dollar amount that was offered by Advance, and that was also part of Mr. Schneider's concern. I met with representatives of Advance disposal this past week, and I'm under the impression that they contacted you, Cal?
Yes.
And, and indicated that it is, if, their offer was that the property would, that they offered you an option, that they would pay you a certain amount of money for a number of years on the property, and if the landfill did not go through, you would keep the money, and they would not buy your parcel. Then they, they also said that if the landfill did go through, that they would buy your parcel, guaranteed. And he was, he was, he indicated to me that he told you that in a phone conversation.
With all due respect, Mayor, that's not what he said to me.
Okay. Alright, um, okay.
Half of what you said is true, half of it is not true.
What, what half, what half is?
He never said anything about if they didn't, if the landfill didn't go through, that they would, they'd keep money, that mentioned that.
Well, that's, that's what an option is.
But in that, in that option that he gave, it states that if the landfill doesn't go through, they get their money back.
Well, that's not what he told me. Okay, okay, right. Alright, okay. And then the other thing that I, I had, that I heard you say is that if nothing else, there needed to be compensation for the people who are going to be affected by the expansion of the landfill. Commissioner McKinney was at this meeting, and we talked about this with the representatives from Advance disposal. They said that they cannot meet with you to talk about this, because there is litigation going on right now, and they've been instructed that they cannot speak with you about it. What they did say, though, what they did say, before you're shaking your head back there, you gotta let me finish.
I am, Mr. Mayor, that's absurd.
Just, just, hang on. What they did say...
You've got a lot of tall tales, but that's a real tall tale.
What they did say, well, you know, I...
You're a gulligan sitting right here, he should stand up and tell you if this is true, and he should stand up and tell you whether he and his client are interested in actually protecting these people.
Uh, you know...
That's a lie.
Do you want to let me finish? Alright, it's, it's my time. Alright, I'm sorry, shouldn't, shouldn't say anything to you. What they indicated is that the attorneys can meet, and the attorneys can meet and come up with a solution, or at least talk about compensation going forward. It's my understanding that the lawsuit that you're involved with was seeking compensation for past years, but I've asked them, and he indicated that he would propose this, that the attorneys meet and talk about compensation going forward. So, I just wanted to give you an update, that a couple things have happened. We don't all agree on exactly what was said, who, where, when, and I will find out about that, Cal, but, and, and as far as the, um, I, I said this at the last meeting, that you are private citizens, and this is a private company, and when it comes to price of property, that's a negotiation between private individuals, that's not something that the city can get involved in, that's not something that this city's gonna get involved with, with me. Then, there, I also, I think the same thing applies to Benton Township, they will have an opportunity to speak with representatives from Advance, and that, to me, is between them. Now, I'm hoping that the attorneys can get together and come up with a reasonable, reasonable solution that everybody would be happy with. So, I just wanted to bring you up to date on what I said, that I would take, try and take care of from the last meeting to this meeting, and that's what's happened.
Mayor, can I ask you something?
No, not now. Item number six is the consent agenda, would the clerk please read the consent agenda?
Approval of minutes, but not release of closed session minutes of a meeting held on March nineteenth, two thousand nineteen, at eight twenty-five PM. A regular meeting held on April second, two thousand nineteen, at seven PM. An approval but not release of closed session minutes of a meeting held on April second, two thousand nineteen, at eight twenty-eight PM. Bills vouchers one-three-one-seven-six-four through one-three-one-eight-four-three, drawn on Huntington National Bank. Total, two hundred and seventy-five thousand, one hundred and thirteen dollars and fifty-two cents.
Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda? So moved. You have a motion? In a second. Is there a discussion? Clerk, please call the room.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner McKinney?
Aye.
Commissioner Deteen?
Aye.
Mayor Hill?
Aye. Item number seven is consider passing resolutions as follows, authorizing the execution of a website maintenance agreement between the city of Zion and GoFlow.com for administrator naval.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. You have before you the contract for web maintenance services for May first, two thousand nineteen, to April thirtieth, two thousand twenty. This is with GoFlow.com, this is the same vendor that we've utilized for many years, and have actually kept their fees level, no increase in many years. A lot of people think it's just, you know, create a website, you're done, but there's a significant amount of coding and other issues that go on behind the scenes. We just implemented online bill pay, they worked a lot with the coding for the, the links and the, working with PSN, our provider, all part of the contract. We did look at an hourly rate of this and compare it to other comparable services. We do that every year, and it's still in line, actually slightly below what the hours would cost at an equivalent amount, so I would recommend approval of renewing this agreement with GoFlow.com.
Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
You have a motion?
Second.
In a second. Is there a discussion? Clerk, please call the room.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner McKinney?
Aye.
Commissioner Deteen?
Aye.
Mayor Hill?
Aye. Item seven B is resolution for improvements by municipality under the Illinois Highway Code, MFT funds for streetlight maintenance for Director Roberts.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor and Commissioners. Attached is a maintenance resolution we are required to file with IDOT for our estimated cost for routine maintenance items using motor fuel tax funds. The estimated cost of forty-five thousand is for streetlight maintenance, which has been budgeted for within the MFT account. Staff is requesting approval of this resolution.
Is there a motion?
I'll move to approve this IDOT resolution for streetlight maintenance in the amount of forty-five thousand dollars.
Is there a... We have a motion in a second. Is there a discussion? Clerk, please call the room.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner McKinney?
Aye.
Commissioner Deteen?
Aye.
Mayor Hill?
Aye. Item seven C is resolution for improvement by municipality under the Illinois Highway Code, MFT funds for traffic signal maintenance per Director Roberts.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor and Commissioners. Attached is a maintenance resolution we are required to file with IDOT for our estimated cost for routine maintenance utilizing motor fuel tax funds. The estimated cost of five thousand dollars is for traffic signal maintenance, which has been budgeted for within the MFT accounts. Staff is requesting approval of this resolution.
Is there a motion?
I'll move to approve this resolution for improvements on traffic signal maintenance.
You have a motion?
Second.
In a second. Is there a discussion? Clerk, please call the room.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner McKinney?
Aye.
Commissioner Deteen?
Aye.
Mayor Hill?
Aye. Item seven D is a resolution for improvement by municipality under the Illinois Highway Code, MFT funds for parkway tree maintenance for Director Roberts.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor and Commissioners. Attached is a maintenance resolution we are required to file with IDOT for our estimated cost for routine maintenance items utilizing motor, motor fuel tax funds. The estimated cost of twenty thousand dollars is for the trimming and removal of trees that are within the city right of ways. This cost has been budgeted for within the MFT account. Staff is requesting approval of this resolution.
Is there a motion?
Move to approve a resolution for parkway tree maintenance in the amount of twenty thousand dollars.
In a second.
Second.
You have a motion in a second. Discussion? Clerk, please call the room.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner McKinney?
Aye.
Commissioner Deteen?
Aye.
Mayor Hill?
Aye. Item eight is consider passing ordinances as follows, item, and let me, actually, I want to say this too, after the last meeting, I called a couple of representatives from the citizens group, I called Benton Township, and I called Ms. Koopreiter, and I believe you contacted Mr. Schneider, that this item would not be considered tonight for annexation. I misspoke, because I did not think we would be considering it, but I misspoke, because if you remember at the last meeting, it was continued to this meeting, so we had to put it on the agenda. I, I did, I called all those people back and told them that I misspoke, I apologized for it, and I can obviously see that they got the word out. So, item eight A is authorizing the execution of an annexation agreement relative to the property located south of Russell Road and west of Kenosha Road, it says per Mayor Hill. I'm gonna open it up for comments. What's the will of the council?
Mayor, I think there's still some unanswered questions, and we don't have an answer that's satisfactory to the residents that are affected by the landfill, so I think we should table this again.
Okay, what are we looking for? I guess is my question.
Okay, I, I mean, you want to take some time to go through some of my questions on those, on the issues?
Well, you know...
Because, I, I mean, I, I would really like to get the answers from the lawyers and the residents, and then we can look at this, maybe this agreement then will address some of the, those issues, and be modified, if we decide to move through with an annexation, so that the residents... so that the residents are satisfied and that the landfill is satisfied, and, and we're not there yet, it seems to me.
Okay.
So, I, I'm, I'm not ready to make a, to vote on this tonight, is what I'm saying.
Are you making a motion to table?
Table it, yeah.
You have a motion to table?
Yeah.
And a second, and there's, there's no discussion on the tabling motion?
I guess my question would be, until when? I mean, would we be ready for the, this at our next meeting, or should we put a date on it?
I think we should make it sometime after May seventh.
I would just bring up that.
We can't discuss a tabling motion.
Right, it's a table.
We have a motion and a second. Clerk, please call or roll.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
No.
Commissioner McKinney?
No.
Commissioner Deteen?
Aye.
Mayor Hill?
I'm gonna vote, the, an aye vote is to table.
Correct.
I'm gonna vote aye, but I want to get this done quickly, so I would advise the attorneys to get together and find out if you're actually willing to do that. I would advise the people who are selling their homes to get together and come up with a exact price on the sale of the property, and I would advise Benton Township to get together with the representatives from Advanced Disposal also, and it will be, uh... I guess I'm, I'm, I voted yes, by the way. Okay, I guess I'm looking for some guidance on when you think it might be done, because I have a sneaky, sneaky suspicion that the longer this gets put off, the happier everybody's gonna be, but we need to come to some resolution on this because it's just, it's, it's too big of an issue, you're worried about it, we're worried about it, but I would like to, that, I, I think it needs to be determined within the next month or two months. If we just table it, we're not putting a date on it. I'm assuming Mayor-elect McKinney, when this does come back up, will get in contact with representatives from all three of the groups that are here with issues, and you will be notified when this will be taken up at a, at a future date.
Now, Mayor, would it be appropriate just to, to dialogue with each other for a few minutes, because we haven't really had that opportunity as a council to talk about it?
Motion is to table.
Okay.
And it, that is a dialogue that has to take place in public.
Yeah, right, that's why I'd like to have it.
What can we talk about? All right, can we talk about item B? Okay, we have, all right, item A is tabled. That's what I'm, I'm getting to here.
What's?
Okay, item eight B is annexing certain territory to the City of Zion, Lake County, Illinois, located south of Russell Road and west of Kenosha Road, for Mayor Hill. I'm gonna open it up again, and now we can talk about it.
All right, the annexation part of it?
Yes, the, there's no, this is not a sighting hearing, so to talk about smell and birds and all that stuff, that's not what we're talking about here. We're gonna talk about annexation and, and the implications for annexation.
I guess that's one of the questions that I have, because in the annexation agreement, it specifically says that just by annex, I, I'm paraphrasing, but just by annexing doesn't mean that it's an approval of the sighting agreement. That's another step, and so some of the issues that Mr. Collins brought up in, in his letter, and I thank you for that, because you, you gave us some specific steps, things that you're looking for, those appear to be the things that will be talked about in the sighting agreement, not in the annexation agreement.
Right.
So, it, it's almost as if we really have to act on the annexation and then the Second Amendment part of it, because they're, they're tied together, before we really can address some of the issues that have been raised here.
I, I, I think you can, I, I agree with you. That's how I read it also, that we're not dealing with annexation or sighting issues. I think, all right, go ahead.
Okay, so there, there's some things in the annexation agreement that almost appear to be sighting issues, like some, there, there's some language about the Park District and, and the berms. So, there's instructions in the annexation that the Park District needs to be brought, brought in, the city has a preference for what the berms should look like, but there's no language about berms anywhere else. So, I guess my question is, why are we talking about the berms that are, are bordering the Park District property and not including in the annexation, you know, other beautification along Kenosha Road and, and other places? Or should that language be just completely taken out of the annexation and all of that dealt with in the sighting agreement, when we sit down and, and talk about those kind of issues?
Yeah, and that, that was, that's probably my fault that that's in there. The important aspect of the agreement that we would have with them is that the Park District would continue to get a tipping fee. That was the important part.
Yeah.
Then what I brought up on my own, and I probably shouldn't have brought it up on my own, is that on the, the north-south line between the Park District Golf Course and the new landfill, that when they put in a berm, and they're gonna put in a berm of some type there, that it be designed so that it looks like the golf course is supposed to look on a link-style course and not like the berms that are on four and five.
Yeah.
That's what that is in there for. I don't care if that gets taken out or not. It was, I was trying to lock the Park District's concerns in, into this, and perhaps I got ahead of myself.
Okay, so, I, I mean, maybe this, the, the annexation agreement needs to be cleaned up a, a little bit in that regard, either add the, the berms for the, the rest of the property in it, or just take this out, and then if we get to the point where we're gonna have a sighting hearing, then bring those issues to bear. I don't know who makes those changes, is it, Paula, are you the one, or Simon?
Simon from our office has been working with Advanced's counsel in the language and the negotiations regarding the agreement, and this is the final version that the parties agreed to present to the council.
Okay.
And this will be about the fifth time we've changed the agreement.
Yeah, okay. And then I'm also wondering, because some of the language here, if, if the annexation i- is approved and the sighting agreement isn't, or there's other complications from the IEPA, or, then the annexation is disconnected. And I'm, I'm just gonna ask a question, because I, I don't know about it, but it seems as if, why can't we just say the property's annexed or it's not? Instead of saying, well, if this happens, then it's gonna be disconnected, if this happens, then it'll be disconnected. I'd much rather just either annex the property at the request of ADS or not annex the property, and not have all these, if this happens, then it'll be disconnected, if that happens, then it'll be disconnected.
It's my understanding that the question of de-annexing from the City if the sighting hearing does not go through would be to protect the value of the property for other uses, that the Advanced Disposal may want to reset, may want to sell the property.
I'd like it to be the City of Zion property. So, that's the point I'd like to make.
To get after that.
Yeah, I mean, I didn't, well, I mean, that's something that Benton would want to weigh in on, I'm sure, but that's, I'm just throwing that out there. So then that would remove some, some sections, it would remove Section 10B, Section 10C, Section 10D, if we went ahead with that. I've got one more question. Oh, I guess it's in the Second Amendment. I actually don't have a copy of the First Amendment, and I, I don't have a copy of the Property Protection Agreement either. I have the suggested changes to the Property Protection, and, so I mean, that, somebody here quoted from, from it, yeah, I, I don't need it right now, but, and that's, that's why I don't think we can vote on it, because there's still lots of questions. Yeah, I guess that is my question. Since I don't have a copy of the First Agreement, I don't have a full statement on the Property Value Protection Agreement, I just have these amendments, so it's difficult to make a decision on the scope of this Property Protection Agreement. And then, the, okay, the last question I have has to do with, this is in the Second Amendment Agreement about the, a system of comprehensive complaint monitoring. So, there's some detail on data that ADS needs to be compiling and evaluating the frequency of complaints and identifying patterns, I mentioned this at, at the last meeting as well, identifying patterns in the nature of complaints, and then it says that corrective actions designed to proactively prevent complaints of such nature, if any pattern exists. So, I guess I'd like a, a few more specifics on how complaints are prevented, because what I'm hearing here is that there are a lot of complaints, and I, I have no doubt that they're logged. You guys are logging them, for one, and I think that ADS is probably logging them. And I, I'm, I'm certain that you could develop a pattern of what those complaints are, the question is, what's being done for complaint, complaint prevention, and does that need to be in this agreement as well? And that's a much broader question, or is that something that's gonna be in the sighting agreement? So, those are my questions.
Usually those are about during the study, but if you have questions about the amendment itself, then I suggest that I have Mr. Simon to contact you directly to address some of your issues.
Well, I guess I'm gonna suggest that Mr. Simon show up at the May twenty-first meeting.
Yeah.
I don't think you want to do this on the seventh, there's gonna be too much other complaints. The May twenty-first meeting, we should have our attorney here so that you can ask those questions to the, our expert at, with Ansel Glenc that deals with landfills. You're asking, you know, I'm.
Yeah, I, I'm.
I don't know.
And then, one more issue, and that is if, if we get to a point where we're either not gonna annex, or we, we start adding so many requirements in the sighting agreement that ADS or Waste Management, whoever owns that property in, in the end, just decides to not work with the City of Zion and go to, go with the county. I, I guess, and I, I want to address you as well, if that happens, then also we will have no say in, in what happens at the landfill, that will be up to the, the county, is that correct? If we.
That's my understanding, yes.
So, from my perspective, I'd, I'd much rather have a say in what, what happens, and I think you might have more of a say in, in what happens if it's left at this level. If it goes to the county, then we'll have absolutely no control over it. So that, I think that's something to consider. If we keep pushing and pushing and pushing, ADS might just say, okay, we're done with you, and we're going to the county. So, I want to throw that out there.
I think that's, that's essentially been my concern, if, if, if we don't have control of the property through annexation, we have no leverage on any demands as far as the sighting permit.
And, I, I mean, believe me, I've, I've heard what you've said. You've been very passionate and articulate in, in what the, the issues are, and I feel for you. I would like to be a voice for you in that regard, but if it, if we keep, if, if we don't start moving ahead with these things and get to a sighting agreement and, and get your buy-in and ADS's buy-in or Waste Management's buy-in on this, then it's gonna be out of our, it'll be out of our hands, it will still be in, in your hands, but you'll be dealing with another government body.
Anything else?
That, that's, I mean, that's just something I think for us to consider.
Okay, right now, we're just in, we're discussion up here.
Yeah, and you know, that's, I, we just don't have the opportunity to talk about this among ourselves, and you, you haven't heard these things from me.
Right.
Yet, so I'm just expressing them now.
Right, and I agree, and I, and I'm, I'm particularly proud of the fact that we have not had these discussions, we don't talk about this kind of thing behind closed doors. You will have, you will hear all of our discussion, it will be out here at a public meeting, so you'll know exactly our reasoning for whatever it is that is decided upon, and you'll know who did it, you know, there's no hiding it when you're sitting up here. So, I guess I'm proud of that, and I, I don't think that that, some, some people feel that we're not, we sometimes look stupid because we're asking questions that perhaps we could have had answers to if we talked about it behind closed doors, but we don't do that, and so sometimes we don't look as efficient as we should, but it's, it's something I'm proud of. Is there a motion on item eight B?
I'll move to approve annexation of certain territory to the City of Zion, Lake County.
Okay, we have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Mr. Callahan? Wait, I can't, I can't do that now, hang on a minute. All right, go ahead.
It's a procedural issue.
Yeah.
The petition for annexation is contingent on entering into an annexation agreement. Since you've tabled the annexation agreement.
So we have to.
Our petition doesn't give you jurisdiction to vote on the annexation.
They vote on the next two items because the first item has been tabled.
So, essentially, we have to.
Table.
Table all items. I will withdraw the motion now.
Second. We withdraw the second, okay. Is there a, a motion for item eight B?
Yeah, I'll table it.
We have a motion to table, is there a second? And we have a second to table, and there's no discussion on a tabling motion, clerk, please call or roll.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
No.
Commissioner McKinney?
No.
Commissioner Deteen?
Aye.
Mayor Hill?
Aye. Item HC is authorizing the execution of a Second Amendment to the Host Agreement with Advanced Disposal Services, Zion Landfill, Inc., for Mayor Hill. Is there a motion?
Table.
I have a motion to table, is there a second? We have a second. There is no discussion of a tabling motion, clerk, please call or roll.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
No.
Commissioner McKinney?
No.
Commissioner Deteen? Mayor Hill?
Aye. We will give all of you a minute to leave if you wish to leave, if you wish to stay, you're more than welcome, but I, I want to just take a break for one minute, so. We're taking a break. Item eight D, abating the tax here to for levy for the year two thousand eighteen to pay the principal and interest on two million five hundred thousand dollars taxable, general obligation bonds, alternate revenue source series, two thousand twelve, of the City of Zion, Lake County, Illinois, for Administrator Naval.
Thank you, Mayor Commissioners. Before I give a brief summary again of what an abatement is, I will say item D was an oversight on my part, that was an abatement that should have been originally included with the other abatements that we did. The county notified me that the ordinance hadn't been filed, I said we'd clean it up on this, on this meeting. Item E and F are slight differences in the amount of the bonds. The abatement that I went off was what's debt service and principal and interest, but that differs slightly from what was filed by bond council with the county, so we're just getting the amounts to match up with their records to make sure all taxes are properly abated. So what, what we're doing here is basically our taxing authority, our property taxing authority cert, is what serves as collateral on some of these bonds if we don't set aside the money in advance. So, we have other revenue sources that come in, or income taxes, or TIF funds, or motor fuel taxes, whatever the case may be, if we don't set those funds aside in sufficient amounts to pay the principal and interest on the bonds for the next year, the bonding companies can basically come in and say you have to levy taxes for those. We set the money aside, therefore we abate the taxes, none of the debt service on these bonds are included in the property taxes, we just have to file the, the ordinances with the county stating that we are abating those amounts. So I would recommend an approval of the abatement as, as presented in item D.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
I have a motion?
Second.
And a second, is there a discussion?
And a second, is there a discussion? Clerk, please call a roll.
Commissioner McDowell.
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher.
Aye.
Commissioner McKinney.
Aye.
Commissioner Deteen.
Aye.
Mayor Hill.
Aye. 8E is abating the tax here to for levy for the year 2018 to pay the principal of and interest on $1,175,000 general obligation refunding bonds, waterworks and sewer system ARS series 2015 of the City of Zion, Lake County, Illinois, per Administrator Naval.
Nothing more, it's the same process, just correcting the amounts on the abatement.
Is there a motion?
Same motion.
I have a motion and a second, discussion, clerk, please call a roll.
Commissioner McDowell.
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher.
Aye.
Commissioner McKinney.
Aye.
Commissioner Deteen.
Aye.
Item 8F is abating the tax here to for levy for the year 2018 to pay the principal of and interest on $3,140,000 taxable general obligation refunding bonds alternate revenue source series 2017 of the City of Zion, Lake County, Illinois, per Administrator Naval.
I pass.
I'll make that motion.
There's a motion, is there a second? Is there a second?
So move.
We have a motion and a second, is there a discussion? Clerk, please call a roll.
Commissioner McDowell.
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher.
Aye.
Commissioner McKinney.
Aye.
Commissioner Deteen.
Aye.
Mayor Hill.
Aye. Item 8G is amending various Zion municipal code sections regarding fees per the Administrator Naval.
Thank you, Mayor Commissioners, item G and H kind of go together, but we can address them one at a time. During quite a few of our budget workshops that we had in addressing our budget deficit, we had about $2 million of proposed expense cuts and revenue increases to address our fiscal year 1920 budget deficit, there was about $300,000 of, that $2 million that was coming from new revenue sources, half of that was property tax levy, there were some other revenue sources, but it's general consensus of the council to do roughly a 10% increase to all of our fines, fees, permits, et cetera, to generate some of that additional revenue to cover the shortfall. Like I said, I just want to point out that of the $2 million, only $300,000 is coming in new revenue, $1.7 million is coming in expense, proposed expense cuts, so we're trying to minimize the impact on this, but we are working basically with the tools that we have in the revenue sources that we do have control over. So you have it for you basically for all the different sections, all the different code sections for different departments that have been adjusted by approximately 10%. I do have, I would like to make two changes to what you'd have before you, probably about three or four pages from the back, there's a section, there's a page that just has paragraphs that starts Section 94-359, which is discontinuing service for non-payment, this is for shut-off of discontinuing service for water, currently the shut-off and turn-on fee is $50 or $100 round trip basically for the turn-on and turn-off, we did increase that a little while ago, and that is part of the water and sewer fund, and I would recommend that we actually remove that, since it's not a general fund revenue item. And then, on the very last page, it's a very small change, but I want to make sure we catch it, there is a proposed fee on the notary public to go from $1 per stamp to $2 per stamp, we're actually restricted by statute to leave that at $1 per stamp, so I would not propose that as a change either, so we'll have to find somewhere else to get about $25 a year. But those are, I would recommend approval of, this is a first read, we will have to do a second read on these, but I would recommend approval as presented with those two changes.
I'll make a motion to approve these changes to the fee schedules.
Second.
With the amendments that the city administrator has listed.
We have a motion and a second, is there a discussion?
In the budget workshop, I wasn't in favor of these increases, however, if you want to piece it together, I would be in favor of raising the penalties and fines for violations, but otherwise carte blanche, I won't be voting.
I will say they are kind of grouped together here, so when we're, I guess when we're approving the penalty, or we're approving the fees, it's the fees and permits section of this, when item H comes up for fines and penalties, it's the fines and penalties section of this, a lot of our code sections address both, so we wanted to present basically the whole package, so.
Okay, so this is going to be on the fees and permits?
Item G is on the fees and permits, correct.
We have a motion and a second, is there further discussion? Clerk, please call a roll.
Commissioner McDowell.
No.
Commissioner Fisher.
Aye.
Commissioner McKinney.
Aye.
Commissioner Deteen.
Aye.
Mayor Hill.
Aye. Item number 8H is amending various Zion municipal code sections regarding fines and penalties for Administrator Naval.
Again, all the fines and penalties are presented in the package before you for the first read.
Is there a motion?
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
A motion and a second, is there a discussion? Clerk, please call a roll.
Commissioner McDowell.
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher.
Aye.
Commissioner McKinney.
Aye.
Commissioner Deteen.
Aye.
Mayor Hill.
Aye. Item 9 is discussion authorization and approval, 9A is consider approving budget for street and bridge fund and motor fuel tax fund for this fiscal year May 1, 2019 through April 30th, 2020, per Administrator Naval.
Thank you, Mayor Commissioners, due to timing of some of the items, we have to have go out for bid for road projects and things of that nature, while we're a ways off from a general fund budget, I didn't want it to hold up some approval of some funds that we do have, that we can move forward with, so while I hate doing this kind of piecemeal, we're in that situation, I want to make sure we can continue operations for this. The street and bridge fund is funded by property taxes and grants, we already adopted a levy back in December, addressing how much revenue would come in for the street and bridge fund, so that's already preset. Motor fuel tax fund, again, is an allocation from the state on what they collect, we have no control over that, but we can look at the amount that comes in, what projects we use it for. So Director Roberts and I sat down, went over basically what we'd be looking at, some of the items you approved earlier today for NFT resolutions are already part of this budget, so I'd recommend that we move forward with the street and bridge fund and motor fuel tax fund budgets for fiscal year 1920 as presented.
I'll make that motion.
I have a motion.
Second.
And a second, is there a discussion? Clerk, please call a roll.
Commissioner McDowell.
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher.
Aye.
Commissioner McKinney.
Aye.
Commissioner Deteen.
Aye.
Mayor Hill.
Aye. Item 10 is departmental commentary, do any of the department heads have anything they wish to share?
One quick thing, get your city's figures, this is my last chance to remind before they expire April 30th.
Anything else?
I'd just like to say something that was said during the, during the meeting about the city living within its means, and I think there was a misperception that we're overspending, and that's not the case. In addition to that, there was the discussion about, or the comment about getting rid of the township, and we'd explored that option several years ago and found out that it wasn't feasible, legal, nor would it save the money that people thought it would save us, so there, I think as comments occur, we have to be mindful as a council in moving forward to make sure that we disseminate the proper information when there's misinformation that is there.
Yeah, there was a number thrown out, I think the city could save a million dollars.
And it has no impact on our budget at all. No.
And I believe the savings, if the city took, if the township were included in the city, and we kept the services that the township provides, I thought it was $50,000?
It was, I think about 40, if my, right in that 40 to 50,000 dollar range when we had that discussion.
Yeah, so.
And consolidation, again, when you're talking about consolidating taxing bodies.
Yeah.
That's a little bit out of our control.
Yeah, consolidating anything.
Item number 11 is announcements, May 7th at 7:00 PM, there'll be a Zion City Council meeting and a swearing-in ceremony for the new council members. May 21st at 6:00 PM, there'll be a Zion Town Board budget hearing at 6 o'clock, and at 6:15, there'll be a Zion Township Board meeting, at 7 o'clock, there'll be a Zion City Council meeting. Item number 12 is a closed session pursuant to five ILCS open meetings for the discussion of collective bargaining, personnel, and pending litigation. There will be a number of items that will be addressed, and action will be taken after the closed session, so there's a number of them, so.
Is there a motion to go into closed session?
So move.
You have a motion and a second, is there a discussion? Clerk, please call a roll.
Commissioner McDowell.
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher.
Aye.
Commissioner McKinney.
Aye.
Commissioner Deteen.
Aye.
Mayor Hill.
Aye. Commissioner McDowell.
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher.
Aye.
Commissioner McKinney.
Aye.
Commissioner Deteen.
Aye.
Mayor Hill.
Aye. Item 13, consider approval of agreement with internal order of police, David M. Parker Memorial, Zion Lodge Number 91, and Illinois FOP Labor Council for May 1, 2015, April 30th, 2018, for sergeants, per Administrator Naval.
Thank you, Mayor Commissioners, this is, as, those dates are actually incorrect, it should be May 1st, 2018 through April 30th, 2021. We've been in negotiations with the sergeants' union, a lot of the same terms on some of the contract language are what we had in the FOP patrol union, they're essentially agreeing to piggyback on what the patrol has within the third year, a 2.5% on the May 1st of that year, and then another 2.5% on April 30th of the final day of the contract. With that, they're also giving concessions that in year two and three of the contract, they will pay back, they will pay an additional 2.5% of their salary towards insurance, so they're actually taking zeros and, for two years. And they also are giving back day-of personal time and eliminating minimum staffing requirements as part of their contract, again, to avoid layoffs for the amounts that we need to get from the sergeants' union. If you have any other questions on their contract, if you have to address it.
Thanks, David, I'll make a motion that we approve the agreement with FOP sergeants.
A motion?
Second.
And a second, is there a discussion? Clerk, please call a roll.
Commissioner McDowell.
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher.
Aye.
Commissioner McKinney.
Aye.
Commissioner Deteen.
Aye.
Mayor Hill.
Aye. Item 14 is consider approval of retirement agreement for Chief Dumian for purposes of department reorganization for Administrator Naval.
Thank you, Mayor Commissioners, as discussed during a lot of our budget workshops, we were looking to go to potentially a single chief model in the fire department and the police department, and we're currently working on that, but this is for the police department to incentivize the retirement and get a significant savings that's necessary as part of the management budget and our cuts.
I'd like to make the motion that we approve this retirement agreement for Chief Dumian, and I'll just say a few words about it, I've not worked with a fighter chief as a sergeant.
Sorry.
Well, I'm talking about the police department right now.
I think I'm the only one.
Of course, you are the only one that I've worked with, but still, it's been a pleasure, and I'm really going to miss you in the department, and I think you will miss it too, you've served well for 33 years, and there'll be other times to talk about all of your accolades in the city, but you are dedicated city servant, and you care about the city deeply, and I'm glad we're able to offer this incentive program to you, and my motion is to approve it.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, is there a discussion? Clerk, please call a roll.
Commissioner McDowell.
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher.
Aye.
Commissioner McKinney.
Aye.
Commissioner Deteen.
Aye.
Mayor Hill.
Aye. Item number 14 is consider, oops, item number 15, consider memorandum of understanding between the City of Zion, IUOE Local 150 Public Employees Division, Union of Clerical Employees, per Administrator Naval.
Thank you, Mayor Commissioners, again, this is a memorandum of understanding or an attachment, a bender to the existing union contract, we have the clerical union to avoid layoffs, within that department, they agreed to, in May of 2019, salary freeze for the top, basically the top step of the clerical would not get any pay increases, they also agreed to fill one full-time position with two part-time equivalents, which gets us a significant savings, but keeps the, basically the staffing in those departments the same from an operational standpoint.
Is there a motion?
So move.
I have a motion.
Second.
And a second, is there a discussion? Clerk, please call a roll.
Commissioner McDowell.
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher.
Aye.
Commissioner McKinney.
Aye.
Commissioner Deteen.
Aye.
Mayor Hill.
Aye. Item number 14 is consider approval of wage increases for non-union employees for Administrator Naval.
Thank you, Mayor Commissioners, obviously having majority of the union contracts completed, we have to deal with non-union employees as a matter of the city, I could present a couple of options to you, the one I would recommend is that we do a, there was no pay increase for any employee, any non-union employees for May 1st, 18 through April 30th, 19 to date, as well as addressing next year's budget, I would propose a 2.5% increase for each of those years, with the condition that that amount get paid back in full in additional insurance contributions, so I use myself for an example, over the two years, that would result in about $7,300 additional increase in salary, however, I would be paying $7,300 more a year into my insurance, so essentially results in a net zero increase in take-home for the two years, but it helps preserve salaries so we don't fall further behind with market salaries, so that would be the proposition for all non-union employees, is that 2.5%, 2.5% of that amount given back in additional insurance contributions.
And could you, could you explain a couple of the other amounts for a couple, without identifying the employee?
Sure, sure, basically what we tried to do is do it based on salary, so it was kind of fair that, you know, 2.5% to me is different than 2.5% to another employee, so, you know, we might have, I have another individual here who would, 2.5% would be about $2,000 for 1819, and $2,026 for 1920, so their salary would go up $4,000 during that two-year period, they're going to pay $4,000 more in insurance contributions, the hope being that, again, all of these concessions are temporary, that we can get something in place to restore things back and eliminate that additional insurance contribution, as well as eliminate the furloughs, the pay freezes, all the other step increases or changes that were basically agreed to by any means.
If the city ever gets to the position where we have enough money to actually give out raises in the future, I would recommend that when you do, when we do the percentage raises, the top guys keep getting more in a 2% raise than the bottom people, so that gap keeps growing, and at some point, I think it would hoop the city to identify a certain amount of money, and then divide it up into a lump sum, so that everybody gets $1,000, we'll say. Now, somebody might get a 5% raise, and for you, as being the city administrator, yours might be a half a percent raise, the lower-end people get a 5% raise, so that that gap doesn't keep growing and growing and growing and growing, I just, something for you guys to consider if you ever get to the point where we have money. Is there a motion?
Could I add one thing to that?
Yeah.
This was a similar thing that was agreed to by the patrol officers as well as the sergeants, that's part of their contracts, is that those, their raises also came with a insurance give-back as well.
Is, in the same amount as the raise?
Yes, not for the fiscal year 1819.
Aye.
Item number 14 is consider approval of retirement agreement for Chief Dumian for purposes of department reorganization for Administrator Naval.
Thank you, Mayor Commissioners. As discussed during a lot of our budget workshops, we were looking to go to potentially a single chief model in the fire department and the police department, and we're currently working on that. But this is for the police department to incentivize the retirement and get a significant savings that's necessary as part of the management budget and our cuts.
I'd like to make the, the motion that we approve this retirement agreement for Chief Dumian, and I'll just say a few words about it. I've not worked with a finer chief as a.
Sorry.
Well, I'm talking about the police department right now.
I think I'm the only one.
Of course, you are the only one that I've worked with. But still, it's been a pleasure, and I'm really going to miss you in the department. I think you will miss it, too. You've served well for 33 years, and there'll be other times to, to talk about all of your accolades in the city. But you are dedicated city servant, and you care about the city deeply, and I'm glad we're able to offer this incentive program to you. And my motion is to approve it.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Is there discussion? Clerk, please call a roll.
Commissioner McDowell.
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher.
Aye.
Commissioner McKinney.
Aye.
Commissioner Deteen.
Aye.
Mayor Hill.
Aye.
Item number 14 is consider, oops, item number 15, consider memorandum of understanding between the city of Zion, IUOE Local 150 Public Employees Division, Union of Clerical Employees, for Administrator Naval.
Thank you, Mayor Commissioners. Again, this is a memorandum of understanding or an attachment, a bender to the existing union contract we have with the clerical union to avoid layoffs within that department. They agreed to, in May of 2019, salary freeze for the top, basically, the top step of the clerical would not get any pay increases. They also agreed to fill one full-time position with two part-time equivalents, which gets us a significant savings, but keeps the, basically, the staffing in those departments the same from an operational standpoint.
Is there a motion?
So, moved.
Have a motion?
Second.
And a second. Is there discussion? Clerk, please call a roll.
Commissioner McDowell.
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher.
Aye.
Commissioner McKinney.
Aye.
Commissioner Deteen.
Aye.
Mayor Hill.
Aye.
Item number 16 is consider memorandum of understanding between the city of Zion and IUOE Local 150 Public Employee Division, Union for Building Department Employees, for Administrator Naval.
Thank you, Mayor Commissioners. This is, as said, with Local 150 Building Department, it's the same sort of situation in regards to the layoff letters that went out. They agreed to a concession from May 1, 2019 to April 30, 2020 on freezing any step increases and any wage increases during the year, as well as every employee in that union taking four hours of unpaid furlough per month.
Is there a motion?
So, moved.
A motion?
Second.
And a second. Is there discussion? Clerk, please call a roll.
Commissioner McDowell.
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher.
Aye.
Commissioner McKinney.
Aye.
Commissioner Deteen.
Aye.
Mayor Hill.
Aye.
Item number 17 is consider approval of wage increases for non-union employees for Administrator Naval.
Thank you, Mayor Commissioners. Obviously, having majority of the union contracts completed, we have to deal with non-union employees as a matter of the city. I did present a couple of options to you. The one I would recommend is that we do a, there was no pay increase for any employee, any non-union employees for May 1, 18 through April 30, 19 to date, as well as addressing next year's budget. I would propose a 2.5% increase for each of those years, with the condition that that amount get paid back in full and additional insurance contributions. So, I use myself for an example. Over the two years, that would result in about $7,300 additional increase in salary. However, I would be paying $7,300 more a year into my insurance. So, essentially, results in a net zero increase in take-home for the two years, but it helps preserve salaries so we don't fall further behind with market, market salaries. So, that would be the proposition for, for all non-union employees, is that 2.5, 2.5 with that amount given back in additional insurance contributions.
And could you, could you explain a couple of the other amounts for a couple, without identifying the employee?
Sure, sure. Basically, what we tried to do is do it based on salary, so it was kind of fair that, you know, 2.5% to me is different than 2.5% to another employee. So, you know, we might have, I have another individual here who would, 2.5% would be about $2,000 for 18, 19, and $2,026 for 19, 20. So, their salary would go up $4,000 during that two-year period. They're going to pay $4,000 more in insurance contributions. The hope being that, again, all of these concessions are temporary, that we can get something in place to restore things back and eliminate that additional insurance contribution, as well as eliminate the furloughs, the pay freezes, all the other step increases or changes that were basically agreed to by.
If the city ever gets to the position where we have enough money to actually give out raises in the, in the future, I would recommend that when you do, when we do the percentage raises, the top guys keep getting more in a 2% raise than the bottom people. So, that gap keeps growing. And at some point, I think, it would behoove the city to identify a certain amount of money and then divide it up into a lump sum so that everybody gets $1,000, we'll say. Now, somebody might get a 5% raise, and for you, as, as being the city administrator, yours might be a half a percent raise. The lower-end people would get a 5% raise, so that that gap doesn't keep growing and growing and growing and growing. I just, something for, for you guys to consider if you ever get to the point where we have
Is there a motion? Did we?
Could I add one thing to that?
Yeah.
This was a, a similar thing that was agreed to by the patrol officers, as well as the sergeants. That's part of their contracts, is that those, their raises also came with a insurance give-back as well.
It's in the same amount as the raise?
Yes.
Okay.
Not for the fiscal year 18, 19 year.
Right.
But for the 19, 20. This actually, so it's essentially half of that. The non-union are being asked, or told, to give back for the two-year period.